Bring forward a report ITCW 0118 regarding information technology asset disposal and recycling be received and that staff be authorized to utilize Jeep, or GEEP, or I'm not sure how that's pronounced, and electronics recycling company on a one-year trial to recycle and resell retired Gray County IT assets. On the floor, Counselor Fosbrook, Counselor McKean. Okay, Jody, thanks.
So I'll give you a little bit of background about what we're doing now and what we would like GEEP to take over. Currently, when we are decommissioning our old IT or electronic assets, so for example, if we're rolling out new laptops or computers, or if we're decommissioning any of our network infrastructure, then the process is for IT staff to inventory those items, clean them if they're necessary, so remove any data, format a computer if it has to be, itemize them, and give that list to the purchasing department. They post that list if we see value in it, if the potential is there for resale, they post on gov bids.ca, which is open for anyone to bid upon. And IT handles any questions that any customers might have, or the arrangement for a pickup when somebody does purchase it. So, looking at a company like GEEP, what the difference would be is we would take the inventory, we wouldn't do any more work on the computers, and you present that to them. They give you an assessment of what the fair market value is for those products, and if anything can't be resold, they would identify it if they don't think it's, if they think it's too old, or there's no value in it, they would let you know. And they would give you a statement of work that's valid for about a year, this is something you can adjust. So, again, if you were looking at what the IT department was going to roll out for new computers, you could say, for example, there's 20 laptops this year, here's the model. They would tell you what it is. On their assessment of fair market value, the county would receive 70% of that value, and it would pay a small processing fee for each asset, depending on what it is that has to be done. So they do charge for registering and receiving the asset, they charge for data security if they have to clean up the hard drive or any sensitive information, and if they're going to resell it, they charge for diagnostics and testing, for a total cost of about $15 per device. I've taken some of the stuff, when I first started speaking with GEEP and looking into this, it was actually a couple of years ago, and we had just sold a group of, a bulk collection of laptops, and I used that as sort of a benchmark, and the prices were about the same of what GEEP was offering. Of course, you would lose the processing fee essentially for their time. Where I see this has benefit, and the reason I'm bringing it forward, what I really want to achieve, is to have this company take over, so it frees up IT staff time in the summer from handling and processing all of these, all of these items. I think the other benefits that would come with an arrangement like this are, if you have a company like GEEP doing data erasure on your sensitive equipment, they're using software to make sure that the hard drives are completely free of information. We don't have that specialized software, so if we're destroying a device now that we deem has information that's sensitive to the county, we often resort to physical destruction of the device to make sure that that cannot be retrieved. I think also, having a company like this, if they can't sell it, and we choose to use them to decommission a particular asset, we at least know that the components of that asset are recycled in an ISO compliant manner, so it is far more environmentally sound than simply trying to dispose of it for other means. The only other thing that I'd like to point out about this arrangement is that I am proposing we try it for a year to see how it goes. Again, the process would be to collect an inventory of what we want to dispose of this year, so we would know what value we would get back from that, and we would be able to compare it to what we would estimate we'd be able to achieve on something like gov deals. I would also add that the disposal for any remarketable items is essentially the same. There's a web store that GEEP owns that you can get on, you can find your assets, you can bid on if that's of any concern to anyone. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Yes, Counselor Wright.
Thank you very much. Thank you. But I know in your report, it says that storage devices will be cleaned, and that such data is not recoverable, and certificates are given out. How do you know that? Like, how do you know that? I have a phone that I'll be turning in. I've got personal phone numbers, et cetera, on that. How do I know that they're not going to take some of the information that's my personal stuff off of here and use it?
Right. In that case, you are relying on the integrity of the company to actually process the devices and compliance with their own contracts and service levels. Phones are a little different. We can reformat a phone fairly easily, and I don't know how much value we would get from selling it there anyways. I would be more concerned about, especially our network hardware, Sony storage devices or switches, where you'd want to reboot information related to configuration or data storage. Excuse me. And I can tell you about the process that they advertise, what they use, and why it's valuable, but if you're concerned about a lack of integrity in the company, then I think we would essentially have to try and gauge it based on the customers we have and any business profile that they may have earned themselves to date.
Thank you for that. Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Would there be an agreement that goes along with this that addresses liability and all that wonderful stuff?
The agreement is basically the statement of work, so every time you are preparing to dispose of a collection of assets, you could present that list to them, and they would give you a statement of work that covers what they would do to it, and again, what you're getting back out of the arrangement. They do advertise what their methods are for cleaning devices, and also what standards they're following as far as environmental compliance, and what tools they're using to erase sensitive data off hardware.
If I may, Mr. Warden? So, is the agreement, I mean, if it's, if it's every time you do business, it's the same agreement again and again, is that something that we should be reviewing to ensure that we're comfortable with the liability, the indemnification, the confidentiality? Because there's a lot to, I think, be potentially concerned with.
Yes, I would certainly put any agreement through our agreements process before I signed it.
Does that mean that council sees it, or no?
Normally, that would stay within the Clerk's department.
I'm CEO.
I would encourage you, the report had a link to the company's website, and if you have a look at their corporate profile and about the very extensive certifications that this particular company has, they are certified pretty much globally, I think, to do the work that they do. So I think the amount of oversight and the stringency of the standards that they're needing to comply with in order to attain and maintain those certifications, I think, is probably what certainly gave me and probably Jody, too, a high level of comfort in recommending them to you, because they're being really scrutinized very heavily by some of the big oversight bodies like ISO.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Yes?
Just to follow up, so, we're receiving this because you, and I'm just going to read again, that staff be authorized to utilize GEEP, Jeep. So if council is authorizing the use, but we don't get to see the agreement, then if staff is comfortable enough that we don't need to see the agreement, then why do we need to authorize this?
Right, sorry. The concern in this regard was that we already have a purchasing policy in place that is a bylaw. It's more or less saying that any assets that we're disposing of will be offered for sale on a public site. This arrangement, we see, is slightly differently, because we're asking another company to take over the disposal of those assets.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Call the vote, all in favor? It's carried. Local Planning Appeals Tribunal, that the Local Planning Appeals Tribunal list be received for information. Counselor Bell, seconded, please. Counselor Patterson. Scott, you speaking to that?
Thank you, Warden Halliday, members of council. We do have one brief update for council this month, this week, which is why it's back on the agenda. Official Plan Amendment Number 135, which was the Gibraltar Pit, which was approved by County Council on March 22nd, has now been appealed by two bodies. So it's been appealed by the Town of Blue Mountains, and it's also been appealed by the Friends of the Pretty River Valley. In this case, the Town of Blue Mountains, my understanding is, has yet to make a decision on their local application, so the appeal is essentially protecting their rights should they decide to take a different path in the county with respect to the decision. The Friends of the Pretty River Valley Appeal lists a number of bases for their appeal, including, most notably, their concern about damage to the environment and the nearby provincial park. Based on our guidelines, which were set when it was still called the Ontario Municipal Board, not the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal, the county would not be involved in this hearing unless we were otherwise directed by council to do so. So, just a quick update for you, certainly if there are any questions, be happy to take any.
Scott? Any questions, Scott? Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just procedurally, is it in fact the case with the recent gravel pit review report that we had, that as a result of the timing, that we approved it prior to April 6th, and then Town of Blue Mountains approved it post April 6th? And so if there's an appeal to that, that it would in fact follow two streams? Is that correct?
So, in this case, my understanding is that the county approved it on March 22nd, but because we issued our notice prior to April 3rd, 2018, it would be under the former Ontario Municipal Board process. With respect to the town's decision, they haven't made a decision yet.
Okay.
So we don't know whether that decision will be appealed, but based on the little we know so far, it would appear that if that decision is appealed, it does go under the new process. As to whether or not the province will introduce something to consolidate those hearings or have two separate hearings, we're not 100% sure, but the early indication is that it could even be two separate hearings in that regard.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Next is the Committee Report CAOR, CW 1018, titled Regional Forum Rural Economic Development, RED Agreement Be Received, and that a bylaw be prepared to authorize the warden and clerk to execute the Rural Economic Development Fund Transfer Payment Agreement with the Ministry of Agricultural, Food, and Rural Affairs. Savannah, welcome.
Thank you very much, Warden. In case you're...
Oops, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Farfoot and Burley. B, B. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I have a chair with me, just in case I need to sit. I'm still with you. Growing a little one inside here, and we've had a rough week, so I, that's why I've got the chair, just in case. Okay, so, this is a report for our Regional Economic Forum for Newcomer Integration. So we, as staff, applied in December for a RED funding program, to do a rural forum on newcomer integration, and we were accepted to this program, which was great news, even though we can't talk about it yet, because it's not been formalized by the ministry. But what we do need in order to proceed with accepting this funding is a bylaw that authorizes the warden and clerk to enter into an agreement. So what we would see with this project, it's a combination between Gray County, Huron County, and Wellington County, as well as University of Guelph, Rural Ontario Institute, and four county labor market planning board. Those are the core partners in this regional forum. But we also have partners with Peel Newcomers, Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation, University Winnipeg, General Coach Canada, and Ontario Cooperative Association. So it's a great group. And what we proposed is that we'll deliver a regional forum, Rural Newcomer Integration, which would be hosted here in Gray County as the lead, and a white paper to show best practices for newcomer integration in rural Ontario. And that will be supported by an advisory committee from all three of those counties that we discussed, as well as environmental scan and documentation of case studies. So that's what the proposal for this project is. In terms of the timeline, we're looking at a one-year turnaround, where we would start work this month, and we will go until March 31st of 2019. So in order to complete the funding approval, the bylaw is required authorizing the warden and clerk to execute the transfer payment agreement, which the draft has been attached here to this report. And though we are permitted to bring this report forward to an open session, we are not able at this time to talk to the media with any comments or statements or any press release until the ministry has made their formal announcement. So the full project budget is $30,000, $5,000 of that coming from Gray County, which was included in 2018's approved budget, and all of the staff time needed to pull this off was also included in our 2018 work plan. So, that is the report. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any questions? Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Why is the agreement stamped "draft"?
It's stamped "draft" right now, because we are working on an insurance line, I don't know what we would call it, more than trying to determine what the province is looking for versus what we're looking for in our certificate of insurance. So right now, the province has said that we'll move forward as if there is no issues or anything, and then they will bring us one that does not say "draft" anymore, when they can confirm with their legal that everything is okay. So by the time the bylaw will be executed, we would have that final draft.
Thank you.
Or another final copy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing done, let's call the vote. All in favor? Thank you very much, Savannah. Are you also up for the next report?
I am.
Okay. That the Committee Report CAOR, CW 060, 06-18, titled Community Hub Business Case and Property Acquisition Be Received, and that staff be directed to submit an expression of interest and offer to purchase or lease the Forsetnam Community School to Blue Water District School Board. On the floor, Counselor Trumpus, Counselor Body, go ahead.
Excellent, thank you very much, Warden. So this is the next step in the development of the Regional Skills Training Trades and Innovation Center, is to secure the property at Sidnum School as the base of operations. So what this report is going to do is outline the business case, and then options for securing the property. So a little bit of background, as you know, we were here end of last year with a report asking for permission to submit the application to the Surplus Property Transition Initiative. So we did that in October, and we did that in partnership with Georgian College, Blue Water District School Board, Bruce Gray Catholic District School Board, the City of Owen Sound. On January 30th, the ministry let us know that we were successful in that application, so we were accepted as one of four projects by the province into this first round of the Property Transition Initiative, which means that we were technically accepted as a community hub. As of February 20th, Blue Water District School Board, they declared Sidnum Community School surplus as to the requirements, as the terms of the agreement as part of this community hub, they are the property owners, and this was something that they had to do as part of this process. So they circulated a letter, which has been attached to this report, and that went to 18 entities, including Gray County, who have the first opportunity to put that expression of interest and offer in. In terms of strategic fit, where this falls is under growing the Gray County economy, which is economic development goal number one of the corporate strategic plan. The concept paper, which we drafted in 2017 and circulated, we've had over 100 stakeholders consulted with at this point, and we've also made sure that our proposal is linking the center to regional secondary schools to provide a pathway for our local, our local students. And is very much tied to what's happening with Employment Ontario, Ontario Works, and other regional partners like the Owen Sound Library, like Launchpad, and building on the premier highly skilled workforce expert panel, which is Building the Workforce of Tomorrow. That's a key document that all school boards are starting to work towards, and something that we spend a lot of time paying attention to in economic development, to make sure that we've aligned. The long-term goal of the center is to introduce the community to a broader mix of technology, engineering, skilled trades opportunities, and to use expanded Georgian College programming to train that workforce for tomorrow. We won't talk about the program areas, because we'll talk about that within the business plan itself, but what we're anticipating as these outcomes, once we're up and going with the proposed center, is that we would have skills training offered locally, and that's really important for our businesses and for our youth. That we would have numerous training pathways that would lead to local regional employment. That we have strong employer support, so we have the placements that we need in order to start exposing our youth and getting those opportunities for growth in our local economy. And that those barriers to employment are reduced through access to childcare, being on a transportation system, and so forth. So looking at the options, we've looked at several different options for operating the center. Gray County, to this point, has been the lead in the development of the proposal with those core partners that I mentioned, but we've also reached out to our private sector through Blue Water Angels, the 24/7 Group, and the Owen Sound District Chamber of Commerce. Through all of this, Gray County has remained the best option as the lead through startup, given the fact that we have a broad mandate, and that's really important. We're able to facilitate and to seed these opportunities, because we are that third party, and that's something that really matters when we're trying to bring the right partners to the table. So we have a sense of neutrality, and that's why Gray County has stayed the lead at this So though Georgian College is a key player in this initiative, they're not the person to be able to take the lead. So the acquisition of real property by a college in Ontario is governed by the minister's binding policy directives and operating procedures. So as such, they have to follow certain procedures to meet a variety of criteria, including risk assessment, in order for any acquisition to be considered by the province. Given the short timeframes of the community hub program and uncertainty regarding potential changes in funding models such as the corridor funding, Georgian College is just not in a position at this time to acquire the space themselves. However, with their current and future demand, we see real potential here, and they're going to need the space. So with Gray County taking a lead where the college can't, this project offers a sustainable model that would allow the college then, and the region, to prosper, completing a major campus expansion to secure the footprint and the future here in Gray County. In terms of property acquisition, we have two options in front of us, and we're going to talk about those in detail when we look at the business plan itself. One option is to purchase the property, one option is to enter into a lease with Blue Water District School Board. So both options are discussed in detail, and we'll bring those in camera, because we need to protect the confidentiality of our negotiations with the school board. Looking at the capital asset itself, it was assessed at just over $3 million in 2016, and it's owned institutional, so we have a chart there for you that shows what permitted uses are allowed in that under the institutional zoning. So other uses could be brought to that center, but it would require rezoning. The five-year capital requirements that were published during the accommodation review were approximately $5 million for Sidnum Community School, but the estimates that we have, again, provided in the business plan, we will go through those in detail, and they differ depending on which option we would choose, whether it be lease or purchase. So a building condition assessment will provide current actual costs associated with renovations and ongoing capital. At this time, we've had a preliminary walkthrough with the architect, who is responsible for the 2010 negotiation, or renovation, sorry, and very familiar with the property itself. We have one good comparable that was just recently done, and that was the selling of the Meaford Community School. That is approximately 40,000 square feet, so about 5,000 square feet less than Sidnum, and it sits on 5.5 acres, and also is zoned urban institutional, and that property is sold on the public market for $505,000 plus HST to a private developer, because no bids were received during that negotiation period with the 18 entities. So in order for us to move forward with this, O Regulation 44498, it requires Blue Water District School Board to obtain a fair market value for the property. So the process has been outlined by the province, provides us the opportunity, the top bidder, to negotiate with the board following the submission of an offer, and that is based on circumstances such as the community hub program, capital requirements, renovation, zoning, and other comparables, which, again, we'll talk about in the business plan. So looking at affordability and achievability, following our last update to council just early in this new year, we have put together the business plan, including the potential land acquisition information, and that will be discussed during closed session. So it outlines operation models and estimated capital requirements, and looking at the fact that our operations can be self-sustaining within year one, depending on the option that we go with. But the capital requirements, as mentioned, will differ based on an option to purchase or lease, and we presented all of those options here. Looking at legal and legislative requirements, to date, a formal agreement has been executed between the property owner and the province as part of the community hub program, so that is complete, and we also have a memorandum of understanding between Gray County, the province, and Blue Water District School Board as the property owner, and that's where part of this process comes from. So in accordance with the Regulation 44498, school boards and listed entities receiving the notification of property disposition have 90 days to submit an expression of interest, following which those school boards and entities then have an additional 90 days to submit an offer to purchase or to lease. So the expressions must be in writing, and they're prioritized based on the listed of entities, and we're located number six of 18. So it is unknown if there are any other bidders going in, but as a solid consolidated municipal services manager, like I said, we're number six on that list, and we are in partnership with a couple of the ones who are above us on the list. So the Business Committee of the Whole is the organization that will look at the expressions of interest and the offer to purchase, and their next meetings are coming up on May 1st and June 5th, before they break for the summer, and they come back in the fall. So our hope is that this is a two-part process. We can get the expression of interest in first, followed by an offer to purchase or to lease, in time for those meetings, so that we can keep on track for our aim of September's soft launch. Terms of financial resources, there are no financial implications associated with that expression of interest. That is just saying that we want to look at that potential to offer. Where those financial contributions would come in is in the offer to purchase or to lease, and we'll discuss that during closed session. Staff will do everything that we can possible to access additional funding and grants, so that we can reduce any resource requirements on the county. And if we are the lead bidder after the expression of interest, and we're given that opportunity to negotiate, what we're looking to counsel is for that direction, and how do we approach that offer? So that's what we'll discuss during the closed session.
Thank you, Savannah. Any questions of Savannah at this time? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, Savannah, just before, hopefully we go into closed session, you mentioned that we have, a couple of our partners are ahead of us in the process, so do they want it for a different purpose? So are we including them in one offer if we choose to do that, but yet they're bidding against us?
We don't believe that they will be bidding, because they're partnered with us in this.
But we don't want for something else.
No, they haven't expressed anything like that. They've said that they are in this as a partnership with us.
Any questions? Yes, Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you. So just to quickly clarify, you either used the terms first right of refusal, option, and then when you said six of eight, I'm trying to reconcile those statements.
Sorry, so the six of 18, so that's on, this is a school board letter that's attached, so we are listed as number six. So in terms of that opportunity to negotiate and accept those offers, it goes down the list, so one, two, three, four, five. If no one in those first five, we would be the first one who gets that opportunity to negotiate with them for that.
Right. You used the term either first right of refusal or option, so our ranking is six of 18?
Yes.
We have no top priority, other than it just makes sense for us to lead?
That's right.
Anecdotally?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Savannah, at this time? Call the motion, all in favor?
We need to go into a closed session first.
That's carried. Yeah, so we'll go into closed session. Who will remain?
And then we can vote on this resolution. We just confirm what we spoke about, what we spoke about in the closed. So, okay, we're at a closed, we spoke about what we spoke about. Yeah, we'll collect this.
The warden confirmed that only, the items stated in the resolution to move into closed session were discussed. So the motion, should I read it again?
Good man, John.
Oh, it's up there, so, it's no change, right? Okay, so, moved by Counselor Trumpus and seconded by Counselor Body. He's not here, is that okay?
That's okay.
Counselor Wright is here, so she'll move it. Okay. All in favor? Motion opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, so that's expressing our interest, all right. Okay, number 10 is other business? Any other business that want to be discussed? No other business? Okay, any notice of motions? Yeah, Sir Burley?
I have two, Mr. Warden. One on behalf of Counselor Barfoot. Notice of motion to send, set up a Gray County Task Force regarding source... Notice of motion to send, set up a Gray County task force regarding source separating organics, and he said he would talk to Heather to get the appropriate wording. And I have another one here. I would like to put a notice of motion forward, that counsel reconsider Resolution 3117, specifically that the word amalgamated be removed and the sentence referring to the sale of Gray Gables be deleted from the resolution. And Heather, if you need more information, whatever, glad to talk to you about.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other notice of motion? Seeing none? Move for adjournment? Counsel Bell, Counselor, who's up on this side?
Counsel Green.
Left, right, right, left. Thank you.